Councilmember Wilcox. Mayor Proton Brown. Councilmember Somerville. Mayor Richardson. Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance. The sixth president bears a call.
Thank you. We will stand for the moment. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda of approval, if we have any additions or corrections or changes to the agenda. Okay, seeing that, so we have a the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor? Thank you. We now have presentations.
I apologize, council. That was a mistake. I mean, there are no presentations.
There are no presentations. Okay. We will now have public comment. You have some on the screen. Awesome. Thank you. Andrea Lynn.
I hope you can hear me good enough. Thank you, Mayor and City Council for hearing me. My comment pertains to the pilot, the I L O T. And I've been doing some math and I find it a bit confusing. I have a home of about 2,000 square feet and my property taxes are $7,000 a year. If I rented that home into two flats, the property taxes would be more because it would be a commercial property. And yet, when I looked at pilot, they would be paying about, well, they would be paying exactly 3% of the annual rent and that would come out to about $700 a year. And I'm thinking, why should they pay 10% of what I pay? And how could that possibly cover the expenses for police and fire? And I don't know what other city services might be included. I don't know if they have to pay for their own trash pickup or, you know, other services, but it seems to me that you would lose a lot of money if the planning actually the city would be much better off if you had the forest standing there. So I'm voting no, but it seems to me to be a very ill-advised move from my limited perspective. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Mr. Strick.
I'm Dave Strick at 323 Oak Street. And first, I'll remind everybody that there are still solar rebates out there. Out there, again, when you get $2,000 for any house in the city, if you're in Heritage Park neighborhood, there's an additional $5,000 rebate for solar projects. I think some people thought there was. And there's still rebates for businesses on Cross Street D M. So we need to scoop those rebates up and get more sold. I'm all for affordable housing. I have 20-year-olds, one living with me, who moved out of the city because they can't afford rent. But I'm against this pilot project. We cannot afford it. Simple as that. Cannot afford to give away more money. We're still paying for Water Street. And I don't know, have we collected any taxes on Thompson Block? So we're just giving away taxes left and right. And how do we balance the budget? We can't do the reserves to do our day-to-day businesses to pay for our day-to-day services. The Clark Road Development is going to have additional services, police, fire, whatever else. It's going to cost more and we're going to get less in taxes. And the thing to think about is what makes Ipsa, Ipsalany more affordable? You grow the tax base so that you can lower everybody's taxes. And finally, it's a, it's a nice piece of land with a lot of big, nice trees. I'm going to really hate to see it all mown down and paved with. And we'll vote no for the fight.
Thank you, Mr. Strick. Mr. Knowlton.
Yes, let's just read this. Greetings, members of Ipsalany City Council. My name is Bill Knowlton. My wife and I have been Ipsalany City homeowners at 307 Elm since 1990. We love Ipsalany and as lifelong Democrats are proud of our city's pride, diversity, and heritage. I emailed comments to all of you earlier today, so I will keep my remarks brief. We thank you for your work to provide affordable housing for Ipsalany's residents. We support affordable housing, but also support clean air and clean water. This should never be seen as a choice between trees and people. People need the many benefits that trees provide. You, as our representatives on City Council, have the power to choose both people and trees. If you choose to use that power, you have the power to negotiate with the developer. You can choose both people and the forest that keeps them healthy. You can go to bat for the people and their forest, which reduces air pollution and provides oxygen, reduces stress and illness, and even reduces crime rates and violence. You all know by now that Clark Road Forest is the last large old growth oak forest within Ipsalany's city limits. Many, many direct health and social benefits to people, to people of this exact forest are spelled out in the email I sent you, in an assessment by a professional forest expert named Mike Cost. He couldn't be here tonight, but sent his remarks. He urges you, members of the Ipsalany City Council, to both preserve as much of the forest and its trees as possible, especially those closer to the Huron River, for the health of all, all the community. These benefits are summarized in your own 2021 sustainability plan on page 35. Trees provide a suite of ecosystem services that are nearly incomparable: cleaner air, cleaner water, sequestered carbon, temperature moderation, stormwater management, urban wildlife habitat, increased property values, increased commercial sales, lower crime rates, faster healing, lower prescription, drug burden, lower rates of depression, and improved back-up performance. You have the power. So no trees, though. None of these benefits for people. You can approve the pilot for 845, but not 945, is spelled out on Sally Lusk's win-win proposal that you have. She's not here. I hope that her proposal will be read to you. That would preserve a substantial part of the forest as a park alongside the Huron. It would be an enlargement of Peninsula Park and would benefit all the current and future residents who live nearby. As Mike Cost put it, "designating this area as a park with large trees and paths for walking would be a gift to the children who now play in the street and parking lots and would demonstrate that the city has a long-term vision for the physical, mental, emotional health of its residents, as well as the environment."
Thank you, Mr. Knowlton. Next is Donna Farmley.
My name is Donna Farmley. I live at 307 Elm Street with my husband, Bill Knowlton. At a minimum, you have the power, if you choose to use it, to negotiate with the developer to save as many of the old growth oak trees as possible, especially along the Huron. If, on the other hand, you choose not to negotiate, the developer plans to clearcut the entire forest except for just a few trees along the edges. You have the power to require the developer to submit a plan to save the trees before you approve the pilot. You could even choose to require an environmental impact study before you approve the pilot. Many of you campaigned successfully with slogans such as "climate resiliency," "fight for clean air and clean water." Here's a chance to say true to all of your principles. We urge you to make the choice to use the power that you have to negotiate now with the developer to save the trees for the direct benefit of the people who live there now and who will live there in the future. Thank you for all of your work on these difficult issues.
Thank you, Ms. Farmley. Next on the list is Sally Lusk.
She's not here. If you would like us to read the proposal to the center of all of the City Council or any of the.
If you'd like, I could, I was going to, I have several prepared comments and I can read them after everyone on the list.
Sally's the last one on the list. Do you see that we have some on virtual?
Yes, there are two individuals with their hands raised. The first one is a phone number. I'll allow that person to speak now. You'll have to unmute your phone in order to speak.
Hello, City Council. My name is John Lusk and I live at 1111 West Clark Road in Ipsalany. And we've lived there now 33 years. And as you know, I've addressed you before on this issue. I'm also, I serve on two city committees. I, I work for the city like you do. And I can't understand why you are selling short your children, grandchildren in denuding this property next door, as well as the risk it puts the city financially. You are contributing a lot to the city, a lot to the, you're taking away from the budget of the city by subsidizing this issue, and it makes no sense to me. You had a 5% offer on the table. It got whittled down to three and the developer doesn't care. You can raise it back to 5%. You can. And he doesn't care. He just twiddles his formula. I think that's very important. Also, you've got two parcels here. You can approve the first parcel and not destroy the mature oak trees that really help the environment. So I urge you, please, to rethink your vote of two weeks ago and vote at, at a minimum only to approve the 845. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knowlton.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Diane Turner. Allow them to speak now.
Oh, I didn't even realize I was, I'd raised my hand. But now that you got me on, I'm going to thank you for your work. And secondly, I'm also going to stand with the people that are saying that the 945 and the 955 Clark Road projects, I think you can get a better deal. I really think we can get a better deal. And I think we can get a better deal and a more sustainable deal, especially with the big budget that just passed for climate initiative. There's so much money out there right now coming down the pipeline for projects that are sustainable. I don't really believe this, this project is in any way sustainable. I think the gas, the stoves are gas. There's no solar panels. And I just think we could do better in terms of sustainability. And if not now, when? Really, if not now, when? Thank you.
Council, the first comment comes from Michael Cost. Thanks for sending an update. Please know that I fully support your efforts to save as much of the forest as possible, especially closer to the Huron River. Ideally, this area would become part of Peninsula Park, saving as many large trees as possible would help reduce the negative impacts to many animal species and help offset developments warming climate impacts, sequestering carbon and shading the ground. When I visited the area several weeks ago in August, there were many children playing in the street and parking lot of the adjacent apartment complex. Designing this area as a park with large trees and paths for walking would be a gift to those children and demonstrate that the city has long-term vision for physical, mental, and emotional health of its residents, as well as the environment and planet. Urban forests are also critically important to human health and wellness for many reasons. They promote physical activity by providing places for recreation and creating an attractive outdoor environment. They promote mental well-being and reduce stress, heart rate, blood pressure, and the incidence of obesity, asthma, and diabetes. They promote social interaction and a sense of community, including stronger ties to neighborhood, a greater sense of safety, and more use of outdoor public spaces. They, they reduce crime rates and violence. They promote healing. People in hospital rooms with views of the trees heal faster. They increase road safety by slowing traffic, reducing stress, and improving driver retention. They make cities more beautiful. Forests and urban areas are also important to the health of our cities and planet. They reduce air pollution and provide oxygen. They reduce the urban heat island effect of reducing the temperature of cities. They improve water filtration, reduce stormwater runoff, and store water. Critical habitat for wildlife and help preserve biodiversity in places where little nature remains. Maintaining biodiversity, especially along river corridors and in urban areas, is critically important for many reasons. For example, the large diameter oaks at this site are especially critical to birds during the nesting season because oaks support over 450 different species of butterfly and moth caterpillars in southeast Michigan, which breeding birds depend on to raise their young. The forest is a prime example of a dry, dry music southern forest, which is rare type of forest in Michigan and worthy of long-term preservation for future generations to enjoy. Additionally, the large trees in the forest annually remove and sequester much more carbon from the atmosphere than small trees and so have a disproportionately greater effect on mitigating global climate change in small trees. I urge the Ipsalany City Council to preserve as much of the forest and its trees as possible, especially closer to the Huron River for the health of the community. This is from Lisa Wozniak. Dear Mayor Richardson and Councilmembers Wilcox and Brown, Simmons, and Somerville, I have made following the decision, decisions requiring, I have, I have been following the decisions regarding the Clark Road development and I have made my voice heard both in person and in writing at the last few council meetings. I have been traveling for work and am unable to attend tonight's meeting, so I am writing to request that you vote no on the Clark Road ordinance during the second reading. As you know, I am strongly opposed to the payment in lieu of taxes that council has offered to the developer, which Councilman Wilcox and members of the community have made clear would negatively impact the city's finances. Many council members, mayors, and Ipsalany voters have worked over decades to keep our beautiful little city solid. Many of you, in fact, have worked on the Water Street Village. I was very much an advocate of that village and I provided support a number of times to help raise private money to preserve and protect essential city services, including Ipsalany's only public pool. The projected city budgets that were outlined earlier this year made clear that there are increasing challenges to the Ipsalany's bottom line. Now, now is not the time to provide any project a pilot. It's irresponsible to do so. Thank you for your consideration of my request. I would like my comments to be part of the public record. The next is from John Weiss, Mayor Richardson, and more two council members. I am not able to attend tomorrow's council meeting as I will be out of town for work. I am writing, however, and asking that this email be included in the public record that you vote no on the Clark Road ordinance at tomorrow night's second reading. I am strongly against the payment in lieu of taxes being offered to the developer, which would negatively and significantly compromise the city's finances. The emergency service agreements being offered to the developer is significantly inadequate to fund the cost of city services for the project. Many of us have worked hard, too hard, to keep the city solvent. I worked on the Water Street Village and to raise private money to keep city services, including the pool, viable with higher city projects, review justice. That includes increasing deficit projections. How is not the time to provide this giveaway to the developer? I appreciate your consideration of these views and your services to the city. Couple more. This is from Cheryl Farmer. Dear Mayor and members of City Council, yours is the first ever City Council in Ipsalany's nearly 200-year history to face the prospect of permanent deficit financing. To balance the city's budget, you have to draw from city reserves every year from this year forward until we are bankrupt in seven years or less. What will you do about it? You are understaffed and unable to provide adequate services to 20,000 residents you have now. Because of our slim budget, we can't afford to offer the going wage and benefits to possible new hires. Our police department is 21% below even the minimum staffing budgeted. Will you future cripple the ability of future councils to address this deficit by approving yet another payment in lieu of taxes tonight? A pilot that will, even with the proposed emergency service agreement, pay almost $1 million a year less than the Clark Road Development would pay if it were taxed and for 30 years. These are not my budget projections or my tax calculations. They are calculations presented to you by your own staff. Does a parent struggling to feed their own children donate money to the poor? No, they are poor and that would be irresponsible. The responsible vote from this council on tonight's pilot for the Clark Road on second and final reading is also no. Ipsalany has the smallest taxable property base of any city in the county. This is due to the presence of E M U, many churches, and nonprofits that don't pay taxes. Brian Foley told me last night, we have 24 churches just on the south side of Ipsalany alone. Ipsalany currently provides most of the affordable housing in Washtenaw County and one of the richest counties in the state. We can't afford to provide anymore. It's time for other communities in this county to step up. The only thing that I can help our city out of this dire circumstance is new development that pays taxes. We have almost no property left for development. If Clark Road is to be developed, let it be taxable projects that help save the city. Please vote no on this pilot tonight. Thank you. This is from Sally Lusk. A compromise proposal. It doesn't need to be people versus trees. We can have bills. How approve a pilot for 845 and deny for 945, thereby saving a significant portion of the old forest, meeting both people and environment needs. You have the right to approve or disapprove each of the pilots. It does not matter who owns the land. You have the power to decide what's best for our city benefits. It would be reasonable win-win for all. It would still provide a significant number of additional affordable housing units, five times as many as the Park Street project. 150-plus new affordable housing units represents an appreciable increase in the city. It gives the potential to preserve a significant portion of the forest that supports carbon mitigation, animal and bird life, a positive environment for all the benefits cited, and add to Penn Park in terms of supporting wildlife. Green Road would not need to be extended, thereby eliminating the escape of criminals fleeing from the apartment areas on Green Road at previous concern of the police. It would just remain part of the forest, or the city would donate the land to be added to the 845 plot to give more room for that project if needed. It would have less impact on the river. It would have less demand on city finances with fewer residents requiring services. If desired by the city, we could work to recruit funds for conservancy project for the 945 forest, assuming that Lincoln buys only the 845 plot or joins the effort to conserve that, that portion. You have that power and you have expressed concern about both the environment and people's needs. This is the way to show your support for both, a win-win solution. Please vote no to approve 845 and no on 945. And that was the final one.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to just help? Miss Evans. Thank you, Council. I, I'm going to start from a very different approach from what the last five months I've been presenting. I'm presenting as a faculty member, listening to student presentations to support their business plan. I went through the criteria, strategic, which is the SWOT analysis, strategy, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I do not see that adequately addressed in this plan. Yes, there's a need for affordable housing. There's also a need for affordable housing in every community around here nationally. That's all you're hearing about these days. What's really perturbs me is the lack of the financial analysis and also the time that we have been asking for this. And when this, this thing comes forward, at 12 noon at the last meeting, who had time to adequately even look at how those figures were determined? This is a pawn, the situation, the financial situation that the city is in right now. We need to cut it off now, nip it in the bud, so we do not go further backwards. We've worked too hard to bring this city to good viability. And I'm tired of listening to people thinking that when they come into Ipsy, they're coming to a low, unexciting environment with, with no future. If we turn that around and pretend, please say. So actually, if you were presenting in my class, you would get them asked. But you do have the opportunity to redo it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? This is, we're not on an ordinance. This is a public comment. All right, please come to the mic.
Okay, my name is Asia. On Saturday, August 12th, me and my two sisters were harassed by not only the owner of the house, but the Ipsalany Police Department. We were there to pick up food and when we got out of the car to get it, it wasn't ready. So we went back to our vehicles, sat in the car. As we were sitting in the car, a man approached a car that we'd never seen before, nor did he identify himself, telling us to roll down his window with flashlight. We did not roll down the window because we didn't know who he was. We were argumentative or combative. He then called the police on us. And when the police came, when the police came, the owner, which we found out he's the owner then, he told them that they need to get us on trespassing or something. When they, when the police came to talk to us, we told them what happened. Officer Brian Gerwig, badge number 214, went to the passenger side of the car and he started flashing his flashlight into my two sister's face, which was in the front of the car. As he was flashing the light in their face, they asked him countless times, can he quit flashing the light in their face? He did not. After we got done talking to the other officer, which Montez Pears, badge number 212, we got ready to leave and he walked to the driver's side of the car and flashed his light in my friend's face and told her, he would advise her to stop talking now. We were harassed and we weren't trespass, we weren't trespassing. We were getting ready to leave and so I didn't feel like it was a need for him to even flash his light. Business owners and officers need to know they don't get a scrap on this for doing stuff like this, disorderly conduct and discriminating. And yeah, that's what happened. We have video footage if anybody wants to see it. And we will keep reporting until something happens to them.
All right, thank you. And there is a, a complaint process. And so we will, I will make sure that you get that complaint process so that it can, you could complete the. As I was saying, Asia, we have a complaint process and I will make sure that you get the, what that process is so that you can file a formal complaint. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to get? I'm good, how is your name?
I'm Jeff Moore. This is Marion James Moore, who owns a property at 202 Little Drive here in Ipsalany. We basically have been dealing with rentals, certificate of occupancy or compliance through the inspection department where they want us to basically replace a sidewalk and replace, tear down a fence that's in the back of the house. and replace tear down a fence that's in the back of the house. This home has been in our family over 75 years. I feel the inspectors came out, they could not find any violations within the home, so they decided to be nitpicky outside the home. The home goes through a section eight inspection every year. There isn't no complaints, no problems. I've been fined $100, $155 in inspection fee my parents have and $461 because we could not replace this particular sidewalk. This sidewalk has a blemish, not a trip point. And I'm beginning to replace it. Boy, I can't get anybody to come out and replace one sidewalk over a thousand dollars to do so. I drive through this city constantly and these roads are atrocious. Okay, and we've done nothing to address them. My parents live in Calhoun, which has the highest property tax base I know for the whole city of Ipsilanti. The roads on Cornell, Mansfield, Huron River Drive, all around Eastern Michigan, terrible, probably the worst roads in Washtenaw County. Other cities, Superior Township, Ann Arbor, Canton, Indian City in between have had road projects, asphalt repaving, whatever. City of Ipsilanti has not. We've done things here on the south side, but not on the north side. If you look at my parents' neighborhood, their particular street has not been asphalt over 30 years. Okay, but yet they want me to have my parents 96 and 94 to replace a sidewalk that you guys no longer hold responsible as of 1993, I think is the year. Sidewalk in this community which we're talking about has not been done since 1989. Okay, I'm at the point of frustration. We want a certificate of compliance, but I'm not spending any more of my parents' money outside of what I feel is a necessary inspection to get a certificate of compliance. Frank and I have fought over this. He has not been cooperative as far as I'm concerned. I'm trying to resolve it. And that's where we are in this now. And I think I'm going to need to talk to the business manager regarding it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. And please give my regards to the mayor.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address? Yes, please.
Hi, everybody. We were in the car the other night and as she explained most of the stories to you guys, I was the driver. So, and the meantime, I had to drive home. So, in the meantime, before the owner at Powell's called the police, he gave them my license plate number. And with the man like harassing us with the flashlight and doing all the extra stuff, holding his hand on the gun and all that, I was kind of nervous to drive home. So I had my sister follow me home and it was just very nerve wracking because a couple of weeks ago, my mom had kind of an incident and they pulled her over and it was like three police cars. And they had her walking down the street. So it was just kind of like, I'm kind of scared more so like for my well-being because my license plate was given and one of the officers also was my security guard at my high school. So he kind of knows me and back in high school I had a very bad temper. So I was kind of wild, if I can say that. And I feel like he judged me off my past. And that's how everything escalated. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that was how I felt and that's it.
Thank you. Again, as I mentioned to Asia, there is a formal complaint process and I'll make sure that you get it. So you can file a complaint if you so desire.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Okay, say now.
Mayor, there is an additional person attending online that would like to make comments. Peter Church, allow you to speak now. You have three minutes to address council.
Hello, I'd like to speak in regard to the Peninsular Dam. I have some information that I think might be of interest to the council and I will give it now briefly. I spoke with Thomas Horick, who is leading the dam safety unit for the state of Michigan. And he said that they would be scheduling a inspection of the dam this year. And I am wondering if the city council could follow up and make sure that the results of the inspection are made public and also, of course, to make sure that the inspection takes place. The inspection is particularly important because there are now funds being made available for the repair of dams in the state of Michigan. In my conversation with Mr. Horick, he said the dam safety unit does not currently have grant loan or loan programs set up. But they are preparing to get those programs up and running based on funding that has become available for at the state and federal levels. I strongly encourage the city of Ipsilanti to take advantage of these funds to repair the dam. The the ability to be able to repair the dam at no cost obviously is extremely attractive. Another aspect of the dam is the insurance of the dam. During some discussions several years ago, it was mentioned by the city manager that they could not insure the dam. And I think one of the obstacles for that is, of course, you have no inspection. You can get no one to insure you. It's just like a home is insurance or home insurance inspection. There's no policies that can be made available without up-to-date inspection. But the other aspect is how dams are insured. The actual policy that you buy according to Brian Stiglitz, who is in charge of dam operations for the city of Ann Arbor, is that by maintaining inspections up to date and doing the repairs that are required, you essentially reduce the liability of the dams to the point that they are in the event that something should happen, that is, you are not as liable for whatever happens. In other words, if you've done everything you can to make the dam safe, it's a liability type situation rather than an insured situation. However, you are supposed to carry some small amount of insurance in case of accidents, like people trying to kayak over the dam. Gained access to the dam because the city has not properly maintained like the rope barrier or around the dam where people might try to climb it up, climb up on it. So you need those kind of insurance. And that kind of insurance is very inexpensive. Ann Arbor says for all of their dams, the total policy is around $20,000. So I would strongly encourage the city to engage the city attorney to find out exactly what the structure of liability is. And I think they will find the same thing that all the other cities have found.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your time is up. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address council?
No one else is currently has their hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Yeah, just like to respond to Mr. Church's comment. That inspection is our gap. It was about a month and a half, two months ago and we're looking for it. I don't know if I have it posted on the website, but the result.
Good evening. We we have not received our results letter from the state as of yet, but there there wasn't anything. I gotta find the inspection, right, the inspector.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Okay, seeing that there are no more no more public comments, we will go to ordinance first reading. Ordinance number 1399, and we have that, Mr. Wilcox.
Resolution number 2022, that 28, resolved by the council of the city that donates to ordinance to amend chapter 106, verse 5, section 106, dash four five, four A of the code of ordinance. City of Ipsilanti to adjust students disposal rates approved on first reading. Move support.
It's moved and supported. Do you have any one to speak of? Yes, there you are. Thank you.
Good evening, marriage. Good evening, and members of council. My name is Luther Lachman. I am the director for Ipsilanti Community Utilities Authority. I also have with me tonight, Mr. Mike Bogry, who is the chairman of the YCUA board, Mr. Dwight Harrigan, who is the YCUA finance director, and they're available during my presentation. Should there be, should there be any questions?
Thank you. Good evening, Jim.
The agenda items for tonight are for a water sewer rate increase in the city divisions. The proposed rate increase were considerations for percent increase in the water and sewer rate. These rate increases were taken to the YCUA Finance Committee and received a favorable response. Those will be brought to the YCUA Board of Commissioners during tomorrow's regularly scheduled meeting. The first reading of this, these proposed rate increases of 4% were also taken to the Ipsilanti Township or trustees trustees last Tuesday and received approval during the first reading. Included in your board packets is a budget highlight document, which covers a number of different drivers for the need for the rate increases for the utility. Primarily driven by a recovery from COVID-19, record inflation and a continued commitment by YCUA to invest in the investment, the infrastructure for water and sewer assets. The proposed increase, the impact on a average water bill for a city customer would be an increase of about $5.05 every other month. Any questions if there's any other details that?
Any questions from council? He's asking now if anyone has.
You know, every time this comes up, I wonder about this because, you know, it it seems like, you know, I've read the financials that you presented and it seems like rates for yep, it did increase because GLWDA increased their rates and I wonder how much pushback there is from the number of organizations, from member communities to GLWDA. I ask that because I don't think highly of their administration. And you do a lot of other departments or other communities that is defaulted and it's about, so, you know, what pushback is there to look at their finances? To see why, you know, those rates.
Thank you, council member Wilcox. I think at times it's a misnomer that the only driver behind rate increases is the GLW increase. That is the largest single purchase that YCUA makes each year is the purchase of water from Great Lakes Water Authority. The rate increase from GLW this year was 3.1%. I do believe, being a former employee for Great Lakes Water Authority, that the new authority that has been formed after bifurcation from Detroit Water and Services Department has done a significantly different job and approach for customer outreach and member outreach. So I'm personally part of that committee. Mr. Harrigan is part of that committee along with a couple of other YCUA members. And I, in my opinion, the pushback and scrutiny placed upon GLW's rate increases is fairly substantial. If you've read the recent Highland Park letter, that would be one example of member outreach pushback that resulted in a change to that rate. I also sit on a subgroup as part of GLW for the water charge methodology. So we're heavily involved in that process. But as within the utility, they are subject to cost increases for chemicals, for wages, pretty much across the board. And their rate increase again, it shows 2.1%.
Is that it, Mr. Wilcox? Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Well, thank you very much. We will open the public hearing and we might have some questions for you.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the regarding the water sewer rate? This just been.
It's wonderful, yeah. I've always wondered why you haven't got a giant solar array behind their meter that would have a pretty good return on investment because it'd be a sizable good size and it would be truly cheap to install. Probably have pretty good installing solar panels. DT couldn't stop it because behind the meter. And it should save us money. Another thought is that because they're already giving out bills and because the because people in the DTE range can't can't do community solar. So another thought is that Yoka could do solar and then sell shares into the solar array and then kind of sell that through their water bills back to the public. So people could buy solar power essentially through the water source or by offsetting their water costs to buy shares into the solar array. Just some thoughts. I wonder if you guys have ever thought about solar power. It's come way down. It's really cheap.
Thank you, Mr. Schrift. Is there anyone else that would like to have comments? Is that it?
I didn't plan to speak on this, but I do have a question. It's been burning. When we did the road repairs, the pipe replacements, I'm losing track of how many years, but it was approved for so many years. Is that rate still going on? Has it ended, ceased? All I know is our water bill keeps going up. And I don't understand, I don't know whether the contract that we set up, what council voted on, it was only for so many years. And I don't know where we are in the point of that.
I would have to refer to the city manager to answer that. I'm sorry.
Actually, I have a question.
Absolutely. If you have, in my documentation, but I'm not sure the exact time that you referenced, but in regards to the city, over the next six years, there's about $1.35 million worth of debt payments that are on the books. This last fiscal year, there was about $30,000 debt payment. That was their last payment in the net for that bond for $3,000. For fiscal year 23, 24, it's going to be about $375,000 worth of debt payments coming off the books for the city. 24, 25, just under $400,000 will come off the books for debt payments. And fiscal year 27, 28, about $581,000 worth of debt payments will come off the books. New debt that's been added to the city recently that will offset some of that will of course be the Cross Street project along with the US 12 M17 project, which is currently ongoing right now. It is an eleven point four million dollar project. And it's scheduled to be completed sometime in the fall of this year.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I'm trying to think back because we were, it's a road that we're talking about. They did road replacements of all the sewer lines. And Collegewood and the whole, I know, Army of the area, Ipsilanti.
There were one at once. And then that was done in early 2000s.
Correct.
Yep, that opened a lot of these stuff.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from? Counsel. Thank you.
I could share those in an email.
Saying no one else wanting to address this issue. Do you have to close the public hearing?
Resolution number 2022, that 189, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti, their public hearing on an ordinance to amend chapter 106, article 5, section 106, dash four five, four A of the code of ordinance, city of Ipsilanti, to adjust students disposal rates to be official.
The moves in support of the closing of the hearing now goes in favor. Public hearing is opposed. Is there any discussion or questions, comments from council? Is there any discussion or questions, comments from council? I would just like to say that based on response from residents, I would be voting no on this. So, Mr. Hulango, would you call the role?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
No.
The five yes and two no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Will Coxon, I mean, you have ordinance number fourteen hundred.
Number twenty twenty two dash one nine zero is all by sound council of the city of Xilani. In the ordinance to amend chapter one of six, article five, section one, six, four, dash four point four five, four B. The code of ordinance is two, three, decrease water rates within the city of Xilani be approved for first reading.
It's been moved in supportive. We have any kind of representation on that? You have something for? Maybe we can raise that. Oh, you don't have to.
This is the same. This is just the, the other piece of the ordinance. One is a water, one is a sewer, but they're covered under the same four percent.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to the water order? All right, saying, Mr. Will Coxon, you have to close the.
Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine one resolved by council of the city of Xilani, the public hearing on ordinance to amend chapter one of six, article five, section one of six four five four B of the code of ordinance is to increase water rates in the city of Xilani to be officially approved.
Is the movement supported to close the public hearing? Any questions or comments from council? They say now would you call the role, Mr.?
Councilmember Somerville? Mayor Richardson?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
No.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
The five yes and two no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming to share with us. Number fourteen oh one and order to prohibit installation of these electronic license plate scanning devices.
Resolution. Resolution number two thousand twenty two dash one nine two. Is resolved by the council of the city of Xilani that the certain ordinance entitled an ordinance to prohibit the installation or use of electronic license plate scanning devices in the city of Xilani. Be adopted on first reading and I so move.
It's been moved in supporter. We have an open public hearing. Anyone here to comment? Either in presence or on virtual to comment on the what is the installation of electronic license plate scanning?
Nothing outlined there.
All right, saying none, I would like to ask. Would the public hearing be closed?
Resolution number two thousand twenty two dash one nine three is all by the council of the city of Xilani that the public hearing for an ordinance entitled an ordinance to prohibit the installation or use of electronic license plate scanning devices in the city of Xilani be officially closed and I so move.
It's removed in supporters, close the public hearing all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any questions or discussion on the ordinance itself? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, I'm calling and I brought this forward. That's I talked about in my council proposed business at the end of last meeting. In the, in the meantime, there were some there was a request that we table this and bring it up later once we, once we were able to gather some additional information about the technology and how it would be used and not used. For my part though, I think if if there's going to be some discussion or debate about whether about the devices, I think it should be in the affirmative and that I think we should pass the ordinance now to prohibit them and then have a debate about whether or not to allow them or not. I think that's a more prudent approach.
Any other questions or discussion, comment, council? I say none, Mr. Hulango, would you call the?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I thank you. That is the consent agenda. Do you have that? Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine four resolved by the council of the city of Xilani. At the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine five approved in the minutes of August ninth, twenty twenty two. Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine six correcting resolution number twenty twenty two dash one eight two to the end of contract number two two dash five two nine six vehicles and affect her number eleven zero nine zero for street bridge. Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine seven approved the purchase of a previously budgeted salt truck for the use of the Department of Public Services in Ison.
Before.
It's been moved in supportive. Mr. Language, you call the role.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Resolution number twenty twenty two dash one nine eight approving the use of pyrotechnics during E M U home football game.
Resolved by the council of the city of Xilani, whereas Andrew Espin Shade of Ace Cairo LLC on behalf of the Eastern Michigan University Athletic Department has applied for a fireworks permit to allow fireworks to play at Eastern Michigan University's Ryerson Stadium. The fireworks are scheduled on September second, September twenty fourth, October first, October fifteenth, October twenty ninth, and November fifth, twenty twenty two. And whereas Ace Cairo LLC will operate the display and has obtained public liability insurance in the amount of ten million dollars and has added the city of Xilani as an additional insured. Now therefore be resolved that the Xilani City Council approves a fireworks display permit for day September second, September twenty October first, October fifteen, October twenty ninth, and November twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, subject to the inspection and approval of the Xilani Fire Department and I so move.
It's been moved in supportive. Any questions or comment?
Council, i- in the past, this would have fallen on the consent agenda, but I, I do understand that several of you have heard concerns regarding the use of fireworks during football games. So I asked Mr. Espin Shade to attend tonight's meeting. In case you have any questions, he is attending virtually.
Thank you.
We missed the Yeah, I mean, obviously I call it trace, you know, that's probably the name of it. It's mostly impacted in the city and I myself, I don't have an issue with on weekends. I think last, this past year, we had one, one game that had pyrotechnics or some, some of that that had pyrotechnics and it was Wednesday. It was relatively late and so I guess those are my, those are days usually my concern. I mean, Friday night, Saturday night. You know, I think we understand we're kind of fireplace that there's going to be some activities and evenings, but and these dates I see, you know, are for them either Fridays or Saturdays. So I think I'm okay with this. How it is, and I appreciate Andrew that you pulled it out because right, there have been some concerns expressed. So I don't know. Our, since it's our ward, but anyway, I think my bigger concern was like I said, non weekend nights being particularly problematic.
That's one of the other complaints. I got complaints from people in council. Be a little bit high school. What's the timing? No, I mean, games themselves.
They vary depending some of the right meetings.
Mr. Hulango, what is the city's time for the ending of fireworks?
I'd have to review the noise ordinance, but off the top of my head, I believe it's ten o'clock.
Okay. It's not twelve?
I could be wrong. I'd have to review the ordinance.
Okay.
I can give some of the dates. So one of them is CBD, so September second to seven P M, October first is to be, to P M. September twenty fourth is to be determined. So they, they definitely are, October fifteenth is to be determined. And the two P M game on October first, that is coming, so that's an early game, of course. And then the rest of kind of CBD. Not so, it runs out three hours. Yeah.
Mr. Where I see you in your computer, are you checking the?
I, I might, I might be able to, to put council at ease a little bit. I have some more insight into the, to the game times. This is Drew Espin Shade. Can you guys hear me? Okay? Okay, I spoke with the M U today and obviously spoke with Clerk Linga and I, I understand the concerns. Last year, there were, there were multiple games that took place during the week and they were night games. The only night game this year is the Friday, September second. All the other games are expected to take place between noon and three P M. So in terms of, in terms of fireworks happening late at night, just by virtue of the schedule this year, that shouldn't be an issue. Also in terms of the September second game, we're in complete agreement about not having any fireworks that produce audible noise that would be perceivable beyond, outside the stadium after ten P M. So that's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, saying no hands.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty two one nine nine approving a memorandum of understanding with the Huron Watership Authority. Completion of the scope of who are described in the M D N R F H G P grant. Miss Simmons.
Resolution number two zero two two dash one nine nine is all by the council of the city of Xilani. Where the city of Xilani is identified and removal of, so generally strategic priority. And whereas the Huron River Watership Council has been awarded a grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of design removal and has selected a qualified engineering firm to provide these services. And whereas the M O U provided is necessary to define the working relationship between the city of Xilani and the Huron River Watership Council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Xilani State Council approved the M O U as provided and shall reverse the Grand River Watership Council for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars and zero cents toward conditionally approved several work in the M D N R F H G P grant described herein I so move.
Is the move in supportive? Any questions or comment, discussion?
This is a continuation of this project. This is the second phase of the engineering studies that have been going on. And we had a town hall which reported out the results in the first phase. In this phase, the settlement remediation plan, we were given various options for that at the public meeting and this is where that will be here again. This was, you know, always the, the second phase going into it and so this will carry us in for another year and a half. We've already got an extension. We've got a grant, we've got the, the extension to allow a year and a half through this season and into the next.
Thank you, Miss Simmons. Yeah, look forward to the next phase of this project. And I just want to acknowledge and show appreciation for Steve's work on this and also the Huron River Watership Council. You know, they really, they're working hard on listening to someone to say thank you for all your efforts left to get this to where it's at today. Great, thank you.
I did attend a meeting, a virtual meeting with the, the engineers. It's the same bridge that, that we're working. There's group of three engineering firms, A E Com. They've rearranged how they're doing that. A E Com is the larger of those groups. The first phase was, was spearheaded by Limite with the other two firms in the union and this one is being taken by A E Com. A E Com is a very large firm that has immense experience with dam removal. They did ordment dams, you know, up by Traverse City and down the number of dams in the state of Michigan as well as really large dams throughout the world. And so they know what they're doing when when other firms, whenever across the proposals for, for this phase of it, the other terms of the two of the lead term was and nobody else submitted it. And so we had to go to D N R and say, you know, this added up to a thing and really won't be. So I think we're in good. And the Watership Council is not going to pick on.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? They're saying now, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty two dash two hundred, approving ordinance thirteen ninety five and ordinance pilot four eight five four, I'm sorry, eight four five, Clark Road, second meeting.
Resolution number two zero two two dash two hundred resolved by the council of the city of Xilani. An ordinance entitled city of Xilani tax exemption ordinance, eight forty five West Park. Be approved on second and final reading and I so move.
Support.
It's been moved in supportive. Any questions or comments? Mr. Will Coxon?
This is data, I'm including it in the term.
Any other questions or comments? Miss Simmons?
Yeah, unfortunately I was still so I may forget the last meeting, but I was. No, I really struggled with this development. For a number of reasons. I'm not anti rural housing. I voted, I think, for every rural housing project that's come front of this council, I've been on it, but I think that this one you know, it's, there's just issues with that from the central to just the financial side of things, among other things. So I also, I don't know. You know, I don't know. It's not the best option.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mister Jones chance?
Yeah, um, I I think the choice between fifteen acres of oak trees and affordable housing, which we need, is sort of a false choice, and I've said this previously. It it probably wouldn't be a false choice if the city owned the property, but we don't. You know, we can pass on this project and pass on the affordable housing, and tomorrow the architect decide that he wants to move the tree down in Southern September. We don't, we don't control this property beyond this process. And so the option is either affordable housing, you know, effectively the option is either affordable housing or nothing. Because the city's interest in the property don't extend beyond this process. And just based on the, you know, the past of this particular property owner, I don't think I don't think it's realistic that the cities wanting to purchase it, and you know, based on the natural arguments that I'm hearing, that wouldn't be a wise idea either. I mean, I would permanently take it off the tax rules instead of us at least getting what we're getting now. There do seem to still be some lingering misunderstandings about the of Benitz's work on the property or the pilot that I think does have been gone over quite a bit in the last several months, and so I won't believe any of those points. I'm going to be supporting the project because it's the least worst option, so. So we sort of quit.
Any other comments? I would like to say that whereas I'm in full support of the need for affordable housing and the proposed project that helps supply some of that need, I cannot support the three percent pilot. The incentives in the C B A do not provide enough to balance it. Even though there is the E S A, it will not add to or support the overall city budget in a substantial manner. And after speaking and talking with, consulting with others who know much, much more about municipal finances, I have been advised that this is really not a good project for our city considering our budget stance and considering that it has been that that, you know, in the next few few years, if we are not very prudent with our spending and with our that we could fall and slip into bankruptcy. So I will be looking, um, I just feel like we need to look at the overall uh, health of the city. Yes, I realize we do need affordable housing, and nobody, I think, understands that more than I do. But I also believe that we have to look at the overall health financially of the city, so I, my vote is no. If there are no other questions or comments, Mister Jones chance?
And I think I might have been wrong about the need for further explaining how financing works is. Is it? Could Steph maybe speak to the how we are, how this plan devises to cover the expenses for what is likely to actually be used in terms of city services by the project?
We'll do my best. So so the the way we are covering the emergency services needed for this development was trying to estimate the cost to provide those services. We took two comparable developments in the city and ran the numbers for calls, estimated hours per call, and figured out based on a unit proportion, looking at seventy to ninety-five thousand dollars to provide services to this development. Now this will not, oh, this will have private trash logs, so we'll not add to the trash ton. So as far as the actual services provided to this development.
And just for clarification, how much are we proposing to get?
One hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Was it the first number, ninety-eight thousand?
It's all, I don't, I mean, that ninety-eight was the original, those are the total number of costs for the two developments which had much more needs than what we have here.
Yes. So it hasn't changed.
No.
This is just the.
There's lots of ways to add this up. And because we're estimating off of two similarly sized projects in different parts of the city, one of them in a very similar park, one of them in a different park, because it's a senior project, it's really hard to actually estimate. I would say even at a hundred thousand dollars, uh, we we would, we would still.
So potentially, plus or minus, we could be making around thirty thousand from the emergency services again, if that's all.
Yes.
Thanks. Does not seem unclear to me, and has not, so I'm maybe I'm missing something, but after all these.
Uh, thank you. Like I said, I spoke with people that have been in dealing with municipal finances for years and certainly know more, have much more expertise than I do, and when they looked at the project, they this, that no, wasn't a good one. So but if there are no other comments or or questions, uh, Mister Wilcoxon?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
No.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Mister Jones chance?
Yes.
Motion carries before, yes, three, no.
Thank you. Mister Jones chance, I believe you have resolution twenty twenty-two dash two zero one.
I have that one too.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, we got, we get confused all the time.
Uh, resolution number two zero two-two dash two zero one, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsalany. The tax ordinance entitled City of Ipsalany Tax Exemption Ordinance, nine forty-five West Clark, be approved on second and final reading, and I still move.
My support.
It's been moved and supported. There any questions or comments, discussion? Mister Jones chance?
Yes, what are the estimated, where are the property taxes currently on this taken?
Eighteen thousand dollars.
For both, yeah. So we're
I think one of the differences, Mister Jones chance, is that the eighteen thousand dollars goes into the the general fund, whereas the E S A is set aside specifically for emergency services.
So is the concern that we won't use that much in services? Because previously I thought the concern was that we would use more than that in services.
You're right.
I think we.
I am.
So then there's no, so then it doesn't.
In one way or the other on that, I'm just, I was just.
I think we all agree at this point.
It goes into the general fund.
Oh, it does.
There's no question.
Okay. So the money does go into the general fund. So I'm not sure who the experts were that were consulted on this, but so it sounds like these funds for the E S A will go into the general fund.
So it's possible that they will use.
Or maybe.
The language.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Mister Jones chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
No.
Four, yes, three, no, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two zero two, approval and easement with Clark Road Family Limited. The Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership and Clark Road Senior Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership. And I believe, um, you have that, Mr. Simmons.
Resolution number two zero two-two dash two, resolution approving an easement. Whereas the city of Ipsalany owns the property on Clark Road eleven dash eleven dash zero five dash one hundred dash zero zero three, and has been working with Lincoln Avenue Capital to develop three hundred and six units of affordable housing. And whereas the city of Ipsalany has a vested interest in connecting Green Road to Clark Road based on the city's master plan and zoning ordinance. And whereas the development of the properties at eight forty-five and nine forty-five Clark Road will allow for Lincoln Avenue Capital to construct and maintain the extension to Green Road. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ipsalany City Council approved an easement with Clark Road Family Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership and Clark Road Senior Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, and I still move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
There was an updated easement that was put on everyone's uh, table. Due to the limited staff capacity, uh, we wanted to get it in the packet. And Mister Bar, Aravard, and and the lawyers for Lincoln Avenue Capital, which filled discussions, and so the easement that's in front of you is what is being proposed. This allows them to build a city road. However, it is still, the land is still owned by the city, so they can't actually make it a cut it off, so we want connectivity based on our master planners, whatever it is. Uh, and so this allows us to have them develop it, have them maintain it. But we still get.
You're saying they will develop it and they will maintain it?
Correct, but it will still be a political.
But it will be a political. Any discussion?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Mister Jones chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, um, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-nine, I believe you have that, Miss Simmons?
Resolution number two zero two-two dash one thirty-nine. Is all by the council of the city of Salyne, that the following residency appointed to the city of Salyne boards and commissions as indicated below. That Valerie Brown, the appointment to the D V A, and with expiration of July first, twenty twenty-five, and I salute.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Mayor Proton?
All right, so now that we have everyone here, I have to go on record and disclose that Valerie Brown is my mother. I know. Big surprise, but I I believe that's what I'm supposed to do, Mister Bar. So, um, I am not able to accuse myself, but I can disclose the. All right.
When you're not able to.
Yeah, it has.
That's the unanimous consent.
It's up to make sure you're comfortable. I know, I thought.
Yeah, I just want to point out that you're will have another member of the family on the city council. Right, but that pretty much, yeah, so I think that true people. This man? It is all. It didn't, it wasn't, no, I mean, it's, it's.
Mister Jones chance?
Uh, yeah, I I know sometimes if you can seem really big. It is in fact really small. Uh, we are all interconnected and I mean, I can't, I'm stepping on cousins and every time I walk out of the door, so, you know, it's it's just the nature of living on Facebook under thirty thousand people, okay?
I do believe though that, uh, okay, Miss Somerville?
Yeah, I just want to go on record and just say that in a democracy, people are elected in in inside, sometimes they get appointed, there we have a few plenty of people on council right now. Um, a few of us who have been elected were previously appointed. Our mayor is currently not an elected mayor. Mayor Proton Brown was elected to serve on city council. Um, if her brother is elected in November, he was elected by people. We are elected or appointed in some pieces to nominate and approve people to boards and commissions. That's the democratic process. Um, there's nothing in our city charter or our state constitution that at all, like it says that that's a conflict or there's a reason not to appoint somebody. I also don't even feel like it's appropriate to bring it up because, um, Mister Rollins Houston has not been elected yet. Um, he may be, he likely will be in November, but I just don't really see that as being super relevant here. Mayor Proton Brown has disclosed publicly on record that Miss Valerie Susan is her mother, which is what our city attorney and city clerk had directed her to do. So just to clear off any confusion potentially by the comments they made, um, this is how democracy works. And that's it.
Mayor Proton?
I also just want to clarify on record, um, being that I did disclose the relationship that I did not nominate Valerie Brown to to this position. I had nothing to do with this. But she is a business owner in this city, and so is eligible to participate, um, with the with that body, uh, and, you know, it is not.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I do recall, I, it seems, and and maybe Mister Hulango could really refresh my memory. What was the process that we used when Gail Wilcox, uh, who is the spouse of a council member, was selected for the Y P A?
She presented.
Yeah, she was before.
She was, it was before you.
Correct.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, any other Mister Jones chance?
Yeah, I will also point out, um, so now with this Valerie own a business in the district. Bud is also, uh, she is also from my ward, which does not have very much representation on the D V A, and I think she provides an important balance to the to the body.
Mister Wilcox?
I think it's perfectly relevant to point out the potential in the achievement, but my comments were not meant to say that it is not approved. Just pointing that out. So I'm called a question, or can we?
You call the questions, there are seconds to call the question. Okay, there seems to be no question, I mean, no second to call the question, but Mister Hulango, would you call the role, sir? Would you call the role, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mister Jones chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, thank you. Miss Simmons, you have twenty twenty-two dash two zero three.
Resolution number two zero two-two dash two zero three, resolved by the council of the city of Salyne, that the following residents be appointed to the city of Salyne boards and commissions as indicated below. Huron Mather Farming, Human Relations Commission with expiration, uh, July first, twenty twenty-five, I salute.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments? Let's see now, would you call the role? Mister Acres, are you coming for this? Oh, no, okay. Would you call the role, please, Mister Hulango?
Councilmember Sweet? Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash two zero four, through in the purchase of a Ford. One fifty Lightning for the use of the Department of Public Services. Um, I had, you have that, would you agree to this? Thank you.
Thank you. Resolve by the council of the city of Xilani, whereas the electrification of the city fleet, ooh, electrification. Of the city fleet is consistent with the twenty twenty-one master plan, which identifies decreasing government-wide operation emission in support of attaining citywide. As a growth and sustainability plan. And whereas funds have been allocated for the replacement of aging vehicles in the city fleet in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And whereas a proposal to purchase of an F-one-fifty Lightning has been provided for its purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Xilani approves the purchase of an F-one-fifty Lightning from Warner Ford. In the amount of sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two thousand zero seven. Any change orders to be approved by the city manager and I summon?
Support.
Is there a second to that? Okay, Mr. Wilco. It's been moved in properly second, and we have Mr. Akers here to talk to.
Good, you, Jane. First off, I want to apologize a lot of the targets of the agenda, I hope as I go through this, I'm going to be a little long-winded, but as I go through this, I'll offer an explanation. Um, so we've had a scheduled vehicle replacement for the last year for one of our one-ton dump trucks, uh, as a cost-saving manager. We planned to replace this larger capacity vehicle with a smaller light can be trucked. Passed council's question that vehicle replacement that electric alternative is available, we should provide pricing and add that as consideration. As a lot of people know, supply chain issues with vehicle purchasing has been very challenging and trying to order the vehicle over the past year. Due to their popularity, ordered for the twenty twenty-two model year, that one fifty Lightning's were cut off very quickly. Uh, we've actually been contacting Warner Ford about every two weeks for the last couple ones, uh, trying to identify when that municipal bid pricing was going to come in. Uh, we were actually contacted yesterday by them to let us know that pricing had been made available and that the order bank had only been opened up for about a day. Um, before they got closed again. Warner Ford, who's the my deal, so it's a state bid dealer, was able to secure only a few of them fifty Lightnings. They were being offered on first on first serve basis to municipalities. It is due to that short timeframe that, uh, the council goes for electrification that we were supposed to follow, which placed on the agenda. So I apologize for the last agenda item, but. It's kind of how. The opportunity transpired. Pricing on these vehicles has increased substantially from the prior year. The base price of the twenty twenty-three F-one-fifty Lightning. The, uh, for under the my deal contract being sixty thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. This is an increase in the prior year's pricing of thirty-seven thousand fifty dollars. Uh, for the terrace and purposes, uh, we purchased a twenty twenty-two GMC Sierra two-five hundred, which is a comparable truck. Last year, uh, it's a gas truck for approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. There are a few other considerations that we have discussed, I just want to make sure we're highlighting because this is brought up the agenda quickly. If we do purchase an electric vehicle, we want the infrastructure set up for it, so we will have to spend some additional funds at our facilities to install a charging station. ETS programs, financial support, of course, the costs, and it hasn't been disclosed by TTE what that level score will look like. Uh, the trucks are designed to be work trucks, but because it's a new technology, it's a new vehicle, we don't know how long the batteries last. Uh, I did verify with the dealer that the vehicle has a five-year powertrain warranty on it. Which I believe covers the battery, but we do not know, you know, what battery life looks like after year five. We do tend to keep our vehicles a little bit longer, so, uh, we usually keep our trucks on an eight to ten-year cycle. So there's, uh, estimating vehicle life past that is is difficult to determine, because you don't have any models to base it off of. Or any other communities who have had these vehicles for this length of time. Um, we're going to need to budget some money to provide some additional trainings for mechanics for servicing these vehicles. Uh, there's a lot of high voltage electricity running through that will want to ensure that they are safely maintained. Their mechanics are safe. There's also, uh, as I indicated, there's a level uncertainty, it's a real project. Um, I feel good doing that for an established company, but estimating vehicle life, these batteries is challenging, because we don't have a model or past practice. Uh, as I indicated, we usually keep the vehicles for eight to ten years. From a budgetary perspective, budgeted amount for a place in one-ton truck from last year's budget was fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this vehicle with the equipment packages necessary does exceed it by approximately ten thousand dollars. Um, we're projecting with the, uh, purchase of the salt truck, we're projecting a thirty thousand dollar increase over budgeted amounts, uh, from that this year, these purchases. Which, of course, could be reduced by purchasing a gas power vehicle. Um, it is anticipated that the electric vehicle will reduce vehicle operation maintenance costs. We estimate that the annual savings or gas power truck would be between seven hundred to a thousand dollars per year. Which does not include carbon emission reductions. We did actually do an analysis of carbon emission reductions based on the miles per gallon for the truck model versus the electric F-one-fifty. It's estimated that the, uh, uh, F-one-fifty light will reduce our carbon emissions by two point six four metric tons per year. Over the amount of replacement. Um, we wanted to prepare this RFL, give council an opportunity to purchase this vehicle because of the short turnaround time that's required because of the scarcity of it. I should choose to do so, if we are going to test, you know, an electric vehicle, uh, doing this. Doing a smaller truck is preferable purchase, we we we've actually priced on electric, uh, refuse trucks. It's a, we got it, that somewhere in the five seventy-five thousand, six seventy-five thousand range, which are very expensive, so. We are going to start taking a look at seeing how we can adapt to, uh, have electric vehicles. Doing so with a smaller pickup truck would be the preferred route as well. But, um. But no, I I just wanted to make sure that with the late agenda, I don't, I counsel that all the information. And you need to make a proper decision, so. Happy to answer any question that council may have and just leave to somebody.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Wilco?
I think this is great. There's going to be an order of us, but this is the easiest way to get to that and establish the, uh, infrastructure to, to, in the future. You know, hopefully those prices are in there.
Thank you for all, this is great. Uh, Mr. Sweet?
Can I ask what, like, your direct or the thoughts of your staff that are going to be directly using these vehicles are about a vehicle like this compared to what they're typically been driving or using for everyday use?
So, the the thoughts of the staff that I've interacted with, they don't have some of the stuffs like. I don't think they have a concern with the use of the vehicle, I think with battery light, uh, towing and the distance that we typically travel, since people primarily use for cars and road maintenance. I don't think that's going to be a major issue. Um, I do know that some of our mechanics had some concern, just just because of the the significant amount of voltage that's that's running through these vehicles. We wanted to make sure that they have proper safety training, you know, how to handle them, and and. Work on them to do minor maintenance. Also to learn what. Normal maintenance is for an electric truck, it's a, it's a different machine than a standard engine.
Any other questions, Mr. Jones Chan?
Uh, yeah, assuming, uh, one could be ordered tomorrow, how long do they estimate before we would actually have one?
Uh, they have not provided a date. Be anywhere around. Six months to.
And then in terms of the infrastructure, would we just wait until, uh, we had it to get going on that? Or what's the, what's the timeline for spending the money for, uh, whatever? I don't like that on system, but it's going to be, but.
As soon, as soon as we have a purchase order in place, we'll be eligible for DTE's rebate program. Um, so once, once we get into DT's rebate program, there's going to be, uh. We're going to start moving forward on that, there'll be evaluations on our capacity and what's identified location. Um, you know, we should have enough electricity for charter.
And so that expenditure would come likely before the trial, obviously. Um, is there any risk that, um, we don't get the vehicle? Because, I mean. I live, you know, two blocks away from what is sometimes a parking lot still full of chipless, uh, Broncos. Um, and I'm not knocking for it, but maybe now and then, you know, they. Don't have it all the way together, so is there any risk in us maybe not, you know, shelling out for, um, the electric infrastructure and then. Not getting the vehicle or maybe not getting it for twenty-four months and so.
Yeah, that, that is a definite risk, and I I can tell you by conversations with poor dealer, um. You know, depending on production, they they've had, they've had municipalities with order, you know, bands, really, I. Because they, they weren't pricing normally what, and dealerships are using, you know, but pushing back, they may come back with adding costs. But, yeah, I mean, there is a very real possibility of, you know, we can spend. Couple thousand bucks on a charging station and sit there all the way for production.
Well, then it's just a couple of those, I guess, it's, it's, all right, thanks.
When this vehicle came up for the placement schedule, I spoke with Ron and I said, you know, let's just take the risk. Um, and go and see if we could find one, and I was glad that the window was open, because that's not likely most of the time. And so, uh, I think this is going to be a good step in our direction. Hoping everything goes well with the charging stations and and things like that, but, um. There's not a lot of them out there, and we make this one, so we're kind of excited. Say your hands, thank you, Mr. Akers, really appreciate. I appreciate this and look forward to, um, continuing to to build and expand our beat. And thank you for all the work that you put in on there, appreciate it. Just telling what you call the role.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two two oh five, approving of resident minutes to support the vice emperors committee efforts, I believe you have that, Ms. Somerville?
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two zero five, resolve by the council of the city of Xilani. Whereas the city of Xilani has created vice emperors committee for the purposes of planning the twenty twenty-three vice emperors celebration. And whereas vice emperors committee, by several fundraising events that require a budget amendment, it should receive funds and expense funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council, Xilani city council through budget amendment, has provided to support the vice emperors committee efforts. And I summon.
It's been moved in support of. Any discussion?
Uh, I guess I'll just add that we'll remember the staff, um, to view the reason why we are requesting that we need to be able to spend and, um, put our funds.
Yeah, that's what we do there.
Um, I didn't hear you there.
I said staff has located the line item for this, this, this.
You said staff has done what?
Has located. A line item for the expenditures for this amendment.
Okay, so, uh, how much are we looking at putting in that?
I. There's a question.
I think it's should be five thousand.
All right, any other questions or comments? I see now, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um, board and commission nominations, we don't have to act on this one, we just, um, know that, please. Um, yes, Mr. Hulango.
Uh, the zoning board of appeals does have a special meeting coming, coming up. Uh, the planning department has asked that I, I request council to take action on this nomination tonight if it chooses.
I'm going to nominate my Arba?
So for what?
To approve.
It's been moved in support of to approve Mr. Arba for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, all those in favor? Or call the role, please, in terms of this decision.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, um, board and commission review round reports, uh, it's like, I mean, Y-PAD?
So, I would want to, uh, Y-PAD meets this Thursday, human relations meets tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Um, arts commission?
Um, yes, the arts commission is currently revising, um, a process for a call for art. Um, and they will be making, at least we're having a working session at the next meeting in September to go through it together, um, and make changes. Um, and they will be sending that to, they decided that, um, they would like vice emperors to kind of propose the call for art that they're looking for. Um, they would just like to set up the process for that to happen, not be your source for, um, selecting, including the call out for specific art related to vice emperors. And I know Chris is on, but Elise is on that week, so she's going to be working with them as well on some of the changes. Um, general process for public art as well, and that will also be done at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Cars and Recreation, Mr. Sweet?
Uh, the only update that I have is that, uh, the commission's working and finalizing a lot of details for their fall everyday event on September twenty fifth, September. And have been kind of really focusing on ramping up vendors and details for that, so.
Sustainability Commission?
Yeah, that sincerely.
Thank you. Uh, Historic District?
Oh, nothing, nothing to return.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Uh, Planning Commission meeting was canceled last month, it meets again in September. And, uh, ZBA sounds like has a meeting on the fifth of September.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, oh, that's the first one, all right. Fifteen.
All right, thank you. Um, there's no sync update, um. Washed-up area transportation study.
Uh, no updates, we have a meeting in July, but I think we'll have them this month.
All right, thank you. Urban County?
And the medicine.
All right, thank you. Uh, YDDA?
So I am not able to attend any court obligations, so, uh, I should not give up faith, but I believe you are there.
Uh, yes, I did attend that meeting, uh, I did not prepare to report here, um. I will make sure that we get a report, thank you. Okay, um. Well, I do know that the, we had a report from the, uh, YDDA, we did have a report, um, in fact, people were there. From NDA and from, uh, yeah, to talk about the work that's being done, uh, downtown and, uh, that will be. Will be starting, um, soon, or in the future, there on Washington on, uh, so, um, at Cross Street. How the Washington will affect Cross Street, so I will say, make sure that council gets a further report from the last DDA. Now the Washington will affect Cross Street. So I will say, make sure that council gets a further report from the last DDA. Uh, friends and brothers who cool.
My third pool hosted the kids' triathlon. Last week, we can do that. Anyway, in hiatus, because of the pandemic, that was a great turnout. There's, I think the biggest number of them had. It's great to see lots of folks out there. Um, you're getting, you're getting this nature fundraising to resurface the pool. Um, the last fundraising was worth about thousand, not really, they even give us seventy-five thousand dollars to resurface the pool. Um, it's been a while since this been done. Um, and uh, they would like to review the number and understand what tourism is like, so that should be quite important.
Alright, thank you. Okay, council proposed business, Mr. Sweet.
I have a.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Miracle Tim?
Nothing today.
Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, two things. Um, I just want to thank the city manager and Ron for quickly solving the problem. Um, over actually, sorry, in World Two. Um, I don't know. There were people that like had paid a lot of sides. Um, appreciated that. And then just five material updates. Um, uh, we have a fundraiser that would be approved hopefully at the Thursday vice presidential meeting. Um, fundraiser will be held on September twenty-third from seven to eleven P M. It's a seven days homecoming theme. Um, we'll be signing tickets to generate revenue for vice presidential efforts. Um, and there's also a few other things in the works such as the book to cover the last fifty years. It will also include information of everything, um, leading up to nineteen seventy-three, but the main focus will be the last fifty. Um, and we are also, I'm starting to plan efforts around the time capsule that will be um, on, I guess, set up and um, we'll be doing a reveal on fourth of July. That's what the, the marker says. It should be um, opened on July fourth, twenty twenty-three. So those things are happening. And then the main event is happening on uh, the nineteenth of August in twenty twenty-three. So um, just wanted to give some updates on the, the main um, events. Um, what else did I forget? Oh, the, another event that will be happening on New Year's Eve, which will act as an event slash fundraiser is a New Year's Eve celebration at the water tower and we're engaging um, with the rest, West Cross businesses, uh, and Christopher and and Donald Trump, who's been helping kind of coordinate all of that. And I'm new, I'm new to talk about their role and partnership in that as well. And I thought.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox.
Nothing this time.
Uh, Mr. Jones Chan?
Nothing for me either.
Okay, uh, comment, communication from the mayor. Uh, I would just like to um, announce that, and I think we all know that the Joe Doan, um, heartbeat summer fest, festival, festival will be this Saturday and it begins from eleven to six o'clock. Um, and there are spaces still available, I understand, for vendors. Uh, five oh one C, three vendors are three food vendors. There is a cost and I did not know exactly the cost um, for that. Um, also plans are underway for the second annual um, second annual day in the city. Love is the answer day. Um, this will be the fourth one internationally. And there are plans to uh, show the movie in the morning and in the afternoon, there will be activities throughout the city. There will be the planting of a love garden and also the planting of a, of a mural. Um, the other thing I have want to mention is the, see the, the light, um, team. The community violence intervention team uh, is looking for a place to, for a mural and it's very much looking at the size of the corner health building. But also, uh, if anyone has any other suggestions for throughout the city that would be easy for reachable by both city and township people, uh, we would accept those uh, suggestions. And if anyone has a group that they would like to uh, have for the presentation from this, from the team, uh, we are open, we're presenting. And I think right now we've done maybe close to I think the last that I heard from uh, Mr. Jackson is we've done close to twenty or so, maybe a few more uh, presentations, but that is moving. And uh, still would like counsel to continue to think and uh, we'll be bringing a resolution very soon for council, for the city to approve some of funds. This work cannot be done um, without any funds. And uh, some funds have been granted from the county, but also the county is saying that they want funds also from other entities within the county that it's been affected by the violence. So, and that is something that we do need to really work on. I know last week there was an, uh, I don't even know that it's been a week, a complete week ago, but we did have a seventeen-year-old that was, was shot and killed. Maybe it was Monday morning or Sunday morning somewhere. But we have too many, many people died. Alright, uh, next communications from the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'd like to remind council that we need an additional, additional council member for the youth and mini grants committee. And um, I want to remind the committee to review the apps that you have. We have several people that have been imploring. Um, and I did send that back out to you guys.
Yeah.
So they're ready for us. So keep a, please go look at those.
Yes, but, yeah, we just, we didn't have a third person, so I didn't know.
I think it's okay to keep going.
Oh, without the people? Oh, okay, I didn't know. Sorry. Okay, okay.
I mean, if you want to go ahead and ask for a volunteer or something, that's fine. But I would want to just, you know, people.
Yeah. I saw you have a volunteer, um, what, everyone wants to.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, cool.
Okay, so I'm quickly looking over at, Councilmember Somerville to that committee. Um, I also like to report that I've conducted evaluations at the department head already. That's going along really well. Negotiations are moving along very well. Uh, instead of having all of them expire at the same time as before, we have scheduled them, so they're like three, four, five years. And um, yeah, so I'll come to you with the budget implications from the TAs that will be ready to, uh, very soon. I'll also come to you very soon with some budget amendments. Some recommendations, um, to try and bounce the budget and recommend that we um, cause a lot of just fund spending again. Um, because we do have a lot of things, heavy lifting things in front of us. And we want to make sure that we're not dipping into our reserves pretty true. Uh, also, um, one of the kind of good and bad things at the same time is that we do have funds that are there or vacant positions that we have to fill at all of the offices. And so those things at this time are the main things that are keeping us. I should say, uh, I'm a little, we're not going to do that. Um, we would like the thirty-three police officers, of course, have that, so that one is still there. Um, I have um, reports from YPD that they have filled on one of their vacant positions and they're looking at another one. So that's good. Um, we are having turnover in our DPS department, basically due to just all their offers. And so I'd like to report, um, to council that, you know, although we may be having some turnover in our departments, it's not due to the fact that, you know, we do work. Other, other places are offering more money. So we're taking a look again at our wage scales and we're doing that during our negotiations. Um, also, excuse me, the mayor mentioned that the Joe Doan Summer Festival will be happening this weekend. And so we have begun painting the mural. It started on the festival, of course. So it is our hope that it'll be done by Saturday when the uh, festival is a, sort of that can be a highlight, um, feature also of the festival. And also at your desk, you should have found a Water Street update number. I talked to Mr. Myers to appear that. And we haven't heard anything about Water Street lately. So I just wanted you to know um, that the developer we were working with, we haven't heard from him in a while. We have began working with a different one. And you're wrapping up some plans for us, so we're waiting to see what that looks like. We're happy to announce that we secured funds in Michigan. And also we're looking for a federal budget to be approved for the fund staff or approved through the so those are good things for us moving forward. Um, and if in fact, we are able to clean up that property of those parcels, then we know that it will be much more attractive uh, for purchasers. And I can see us, I see that it will, we look better in the future. In spite of what we saw here tonight, um, I believe that because of what is being mapped out with Water Street, that that will be a win-win for us. So I want to thank that Earl and his staff uh, for securing those funds for us. And I hope that the public remembers those, you know, remembers those things. And I personally, that's always from the outside, um, but to be positive and look at what is happening. The future is happening, that's good. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, manager, we are now, uh, open for, um,
Mayor, if we could stop at the, the communications real quick?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not certain if council saw, I would, it came in later today. There might be some scheduling issues with the, the planned joint meeting for, that would be held at EMU on the twenty-seventh. Council meets in October on the fourth and eighteenth. I suggest that to EMU for potential other dates. I'm still hoping to secure September twenty-seventh, but I need to have further discussions with EMU. I did uh, add a, a communication about the twenty-two MML convention. Um, so if you'd like to attend that, please let me know. And then the proposed city council and police advisory commission joint meeting date. The chair has requested either a September or October date. Um, I believe the, after speaking with the mayor, she, she suggested the September twenty-second date. So if everyone has availability on, on that date, um, I can speak with the police advisory commission at this next meeting on Thursday. September twenty-second, it's a Thursday.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Mr. Hellinger, uh, uh, the planning mission joint meeting September twenty-seventh, you mentioned a possible date for EMU September twenty-seventh, but was that meant to be October?
That was meant to be September twenty-seventh. I, I spoke to EMU this afternoon. And I suggested maybe some alternative dates of the fourth and the eighteenth.
Awesome.
So I'm still hoping to secure September twenty-seventh. Um, but I just wanted you to keep, keep in your head that it, it could be pushed back.
I think I'm misunderstanding. I'm misunderstanding.
So the facility at EMU might not be available on the twenty-seventh?
That's right, because we were gonna do this one there.
Yes. And with the state law having changed that each, each public body actually has to record a meeting either through visual or audio. It, it makes it difficult in other facilities that, that are available to the city uh, to keep that recording and maintain it for a year for a body that size.
I'm with some of you. Secondly, well, what's the process? We would like to talk to them.
Send me an email.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, um, one additional thing. I wanted to bring attention to, um, a document that was in your packet. Um, the update on the Maroni facilities. Hope everyone was able to see that, because there's like a lot of questions about how many.
I read all that.
I'm sorry.
I did a lot of reading.
Yeah, there's, so it's not going as fast as people. So I wanted you guys to look at it. Got any questions? Um, you know, if you feel limited, I'll, I should meet with the gentleman. So I want to say that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, public comment? The audience or anyone online that would like to have comment? Alright, seeing none, I.